This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so welcome everybody to the January 20th Board of Commissioners meeting for South Whitehall Township. Just want to go over a quick set of ground rules for tonight's meeting since we are in a virtual meeting. We ask, kindly ask everybody to remain on mute throughout the meeting unless it is your turn to talk. This just provides an ample opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to discuss the topic on the agenda. The chat feature will be closed during discussion, however, will be opened at the end of the Board's discussion on that agenda topic. If you do wish to speak under courtesy of the floor for that topic, I simply ask that you put your name and address into the chat feature, and President Morgan will call on you when it is your turn. Other than that, I just ask everybody remains respectful throughout tonight's meeting, and we'll get through this in no time. So, thank you very much. Commissioner Morgan, it's yours.
Thank you, Randy. All right. So with that being said, again, welcome to the January 20th meeting of the South Whitehall Board of Commissioners. I'd ask first that we could do a roll call vote to see who is present this evening. Renee?
Commissioner Walk.
Here.
Commissioner Mobilio.
Here.
Commissioner Sutton.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here. Thanks Renee. All right. Next, I ask if everybody would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to note that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on Board Docs for the public's access. I'd also like to note that the Board did need an executive session right prior to this public meeting to discuss legal matters. That being said, we're going to move right into our agenda for this evening. And first on our agenda for possible action is our minutes from January 6, 2021. The Board has those meeting minutes. And we did have everybody present for that particular meeting on January 6. Were there any questions or comments from the Board on the January 6 Board of Commissioner meeting minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to move forward with said minutes?
Remove.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Can I have a roll call vote, please Renee?
Commissioner Walk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio.
Aye.
Commissioner Sutton.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. All right. Next this evening, we don't have anything on the list for presentations, but I would like to add something. I'd like to note that recently, in the newspaper and in the news, I'm sure many of you had seen and some articles and reports on some allegations made against the township in a lawsuit filed earlier last week. Those allegations pertain primarily to a former employee whose employment with the township was terminated nearly two years ago at a public meeting on February 6, 2019. Those allegations do not reflect on the integrity, the professionalism, and the dedication of the men and women currently employed by the South Whitehall Police Department who work very hard every day to protect our residents, businesses, and visitors. The township is greatly appreciative of their service each and every day. The allegations made against the former employee at issue were previously reported to and investigated by the Pennsylvania State Lehigh County District Attorney's Office and the District Attorney's Office determined that no criminal charges were warranted. Any claim that the township does not exercise appropriate oversight with respect to its police department or that the department's policies and procedures are deficient is without merit. Our police department has received the honor of being awarded accreditation by the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, LIAC, which involves a rigorous and ongoing assessment of the police department's compliance with an extensive range of professional standards. LIAC accreditation is a distinction earned by fewer than 12% of the municipal law enforcement agencies in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We felt as a board and as a township, it was important to share this information to shed light on the very importance and the dedication and the professionalism of our police department each and every day. Thank you. All right. Moving right along, we do have an ordinance for consideration this evening for possible adoption. It is the ordinance amending the codified ordinances of South Whitehall Township to add a new chapter 65 entitled "The South Whitehall Township COVID-19 Relief Small Business Grant Program" and further provide for severability, failure to enforce, not a waiver repealer, and effective date. Attorney Zader, should I hand this to you at this point?
I'd be glad to give a brief introduction.
Commissioner Morgan.
This, of course, was discussed at the last Board of Commissioners meeting and direction was given for appropriate advertising. That advertising for possible adoption of the ordinance has occurred as required by law. I would note that the $115,000 from the Fiscal Stability Fund that is envisioned by this ordinance would be the limit of funds that would be spent. There would be no other funds that would happen to be spent or which would be authorized for expenditure. And the very specific details of the program and how it would operate in concert with the Greater League of the Chamber of Commerce. Those procedures for the grant program are outlined at the exhibit to this ordinance. And I believe that Commissioner Mobilio was the primary draftsman of those specific details. So if he would like to comment further, certainly, I would welcome that.
Thank you, Attorney Zader. I think we talked about this at length in several meetings. So I don't want to just kind of keep being a dead horse. I just, I I know that there is not universal support on this board for this program. There are some folks who thought the money should come from other places or that further.
Not muted. You're on the call. Please mute your phone. Thank you. Sorry, Commissioner.
No, no, that's okay. And I know that, you know, there's not universal agreement as to where the money comes from and, you know, all the details of this program, but I think that there, I can speak for the Board. I say that we're all interested in doing what we can to help local businesses. And at the end of the day, this program will help. Will it change course for many businesses that were otherwise closed? I don't know. But I know that it'll provide a lifeline that was not previously there. And I think that as a township that has done extremely well with our finances and making sure that we're stable and that our budget is balanced, that we have a unique opportunity that maybe other municipalities don't have, and that's to help our local small businesses. So I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, specifically Jessica O'Donnell and Ashley. I know Jessica's on the line, as well as the fellow commissioners who were supportive of this program. And I think this is a great, a great opportunity for us to help. And I'm just very thankful that there was enough people on board to make this happen. And I look forward to hopefully seeing a lot of participation in the program.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan, pending any comment or questions from the Board, followed by any comment or question from the public, the ordinance is ready for a vote if the Board so desires.
Thank you, Attorney Zader. And I'd just like to echo some of the comments that Commissioner Mobilio said. You know, there's been a lot of discussion on this. I won't belabor that any longer. But I think this is an excellent opportunity to work directly, obviously, with the Chamber of Commerce to do great things locally here for South Whitehall. And I truly see this as an investment into our community and our own economy. You know, furthermore, you know, I think Jess and Ashley from the Chamber gave some great stories and information and educated us on the benefits of any program out there that can help small businesses during this time. So I'm thrilled to be a supporter of it and open the floor up to any questions or comments from the rest of the Board, and then I'll open it up to the public before a vote.
Commissioner Morgan, sure. I'd like to make a comment if I could. I do support helping small businesses in South Whitehall. It's something I'm very near and dear to my heart. I did some research on this over the last few weeks since our last meeting. And something that I found was that the expiration date for when the COVID grant that we received needed to be spent originally was December 31st of 2020, has actually been extended to the end of this year, which is good news. And I'm wondering, I don't know how this would, would need to work, but I fully support doing grants for our small businesses. I would very much like to see, instead of tapping our Fiscal Stability Fund, which is a fund that we keep typically around 20% to assist with fluctuations in revenue, which can typically occur at the beginning of the year, as well as to provide for unforeseen needs or unanticipated events that may happen. Instead of taking from that fund, I certainly would love to see this program, which is very, very nicely worked out to help our businesses, to actually have that funding come from the grant money that we received. Helping businesses is one of the uses that is approved from Lehigh County to use that grant. So, you know, at this point, I would like to make a motion that we move forward with this grant program, but to ask that the funding be taken from our COVID grant money, so that we're basically a pass-through of that money to the businesses.
I guess I'm confused. I thought it was, it was made very clear in numerous previous meetings that that money had already been earmarked for other uses. So I don't know what money you're referring to.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Mobilio. Yes, that was allocated towards rent, but that rent was budgeted in last year's approved budget. So, you know, certainly, I think that's something we could probably take a look at our budget again and rework things. But that wasn't a hole in our budget because of COVID. It was paying for rent at the Roma Building, which, that $138,000 that was allocated there, that Roma rent money actually came out of the Campus Renovation Fund. So that was a separate expenditure, not necessarily created from a COVID impact.
So I second. That those COVID funds have already been, like Commissioner Mobilio had mentioned, that they've already been spent and allocated. And if, if we did that now, we'd end up taking $115,000 from the Fiscal Stability to fill the void anyway. So it's a full circle. So, you know, I have to agree with Commissioner Mobilio. We talked about this at length. And this was the best way to go about it, and I still support the way it's set up.
I second Commissioner Kelly's motion for the reasons she stated. And I'd just like to draw this discussion out a little bit. I think we should, we should not use taxpayers' money. We should not use the $115,000 Fiscal Stability Fund. I said that at the last meeting. The township received this $326,000 grant money from the county. Decisions were made where to spend it that the Board was not involved with. The $138,000 that was spent on the Roma Building rent is a non-COVID expense. So, South Whitehall Township used COVID grant money to pay the rent. I don't think that's appropriate. And I think if the Board had been involved prior to those expenditures being made, we would have had this discussion ahead of time, not, not after the fact. So, I second the motion. I support it completely. And I don't know what the accounting method is, but I would hope that we could find an accounting method to do the right thing here, which is to use COVID grant money for COVID expenses in support of the small businesses, like we all want to do, and not spend it on rent.
Well, let's, let's start with your motion and your, you, we have a motion on the floor and a second. But I have comments from the public and Commissioner Sutton, I think somebody has some comments, but I'll just say this. The rent money is only allowed to be used for that COVID expense, and that was approved by the county. So I'll just say that. Commissioner Sutton, I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
I just had a couple of words, just a couple of words to say. Basically, I mentioned that before. This COVID grant that Commissioner Mobilio has came up with the idea, it's just a wonderful idea. It is time-sensitive. It is something that people need now. I do not want to delay this. We're definitely making a motion to approve it.
Okay, so we.
I missed what Commissioner Morgan said. You made a statement prior to Commissioner Sutton speaking, something having to do with something the county said. Could you repeat that, please?
The rent, the use of the COVID grant money towards the rent was allowable for those funds. Absolutely allowable. That was an approved expenditure. So that's all I said.
I have information that states otherwise.
Okay, well, we were well within, and I'll defer to Renee. She worked with the county on this. But I know we were well within our rights with what we, we were allowable to do with that COVID grant money went towards all COVID allowable expenses. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, the money.
I'm still speaking. The Roma Building rent is associated with the campus renovation project where employees are displaced and need temporary offices, where the Roma Building was selected for that purpose. That is not a COVID-related expense in any way whatsoever.
Well, I just have one follow-up. So if we use that $138,000 for a rent line item in the budget that was already approved and appropriated, so then there's $138,000 surplus in that rent fund then. Is that? I hope I'm making sense. We appropriated a full year of rent for the building. So when this grant was applied, it would have left that extra money to be used elsewhere.
To say it in other words, this in effect created $138,000 cost reduction for the campus renovation project. I think this is very synergistic, and I would like some people to be open-minded and maybe think out of the box on this. We all support funding small businesses. We have all agreed with Commissioner Mobilio from the moment he introduced this. The only thing we disagreed on is the funding. So we have been consistent in our viewpoint that we should not use taxpayer money or stability money. And now, now we, we realize that because the deadline is extended, the $136,000 could be used for that purpose. So what, what is better than using COVID grant money to support small businesses? And if something occurred in our recent past where that didn't happen, where COVID grant money was used for a non-COVID purpose, why can't we do what's necessary to correct that situation? I don't know, maybe we need to table this for one more meeting or whatever. It doesn't seem to me like it's insurmountable to figure out how to handle that accounting, and we get a win-win-win all around, right? We use grant money, the small businesses get a benefit. We use the chamber because they're excellent at doing this sort of thing. We'll all be happy. What's wrong with that?
Mike, it's all tax money. It's all tax money. Every bit of it, even the grant money. It's all taxpayer money. It's all tax money.
I think the distinction, Commissioner Morgan, is it was unexpected grant money that was not figured into our budget for last year. And if it's something that we could take and use as a pass-through to support our small businesses, you know, if we could even increase it from the 115 that was proposed to the 138, that would help even more businesses. You know, this is not our taxpayer money from our residents, being their property taxes or, you know, monies that come in that way of our revenue in South Whitehall. I understand it is because it originally originated from the federal government. So yes, of course it is. But it wasn't our South Whitehall taxpayer money.
This, this discussion is exactly what is wrong with government. This is the embodiment of government influence, government involvement, red tape, where it is paralysis by analysis. It's, well, what about this fund? What about that fund? Why don't we move this money into that money, into that money, into that money? The money's there, the will is there, the need is there. Whether we take it from Fiscal Stability, from a grant fund, from whatever fund, the point is that people need help now. They don't need a bunch of commissioners to dawdle and twiddle while the township burns. They need help now. This has been, everyone on this hall, all these commissioners here have had an opportunity to propose their own plan, propose some other alternative. And all I hear is the typical pattern of obstruction, obstruction, obstruction for the sake of obstruction, so that certain commissioners can, I don't know, toss red meat to their followers, to their base, whatever the case may be, not willing to give credit to anyone else but themselves or coming up with something or doing something positive. There has been no support, there's been support for the concept, but never once just to come to a compromise and say, well, here's where we can agree. We all agree that the small businesses need help. We all agree that we have money in some form or fashion to pay for it. So why is it that we can't just agree to do it now while the need is there, rather than fight and argue and just stand our ground on issues that ultimately are completely irrelevant? Where the money comes from is irrelevant because the money is coming from either taxpayer dollars or it's coming from COVID money. The fact is that at the end of the day, if we have a surplus, that money is going to go to Fiscal Stability. If we have a shortfall, it's coming out of Fiscal Stability. It all comes from the same pot. There are just different pockets. So why can't we just all agree that this is a good idea to help the township and not try to crawl over each other to try to come up with the best argument for why it shouldn't happen?
Well, I will say that I complimented Commissioner Mobilio. When I started, I thought this was a great plan. I believe Commissioner Walk did the same thing. And at our last meeting, there was discussion that this program was very much like Laura McConaughey's. And I read up on the newspaper article with theirs. And they actually took $46,000 of their COVID grant money to provide to businesses. So, you know, it's not unusual to. As a test.
We are not looking at a cringy. We can, we are our own municipality. We don't have to do what other municipalities do. We don't have to follow their lead. And if we did, what do we look like then? We can't think for ourselves. We can't make our own decisions. We have to wait for someone else to do things a certain way, and then we have to follow them. The money's there, the will is there, the need is there. Let's take action and not be a typical government body that can't get anything done because we're all just finding a way to make the perfect be the enemy of the good.
I'd like to, I'd like to add one, one more point, sort of a sidebar. If we had had an active discussion on this, when we found out that the $326,000 was available to the township, that would have given Commissioner Mobilio to say, hey, I want to use that for small businesses. And guess what? We would have had up to $326,000 to use for small businesses, not, not.
That is not true.
So the small, so let me get this straight. The small businesses, the people in need suffer because of what you consider to be an irregularity or a discrepancy with the process. So it's our opportunity to punish those in need to teach the township a lesson? What is the point, Mike? What is the point?
I'm saying use the grant money for the people. I'm not punishing anyone. I'm not obstructing anyone. I'm facilitating something. I said it's synergistic, and I'm trying to facilitate something that we should be able to accomplish.
We can accomplish something tonight, Mike, tonight, not a month or two or three months from now. Tonight, we can accomplish something for everyone's benefit. This is a positive thing. Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, Mike.
All right, let's.
I just want to add one, one thing that I would love to see. Grant money or any other money in addition to the 115 at any time to continue with the help that we're going to give our citizens. So 115, I hope is only the beginning.
All right. So let's open this up. You know, I do have a question in the chat from Mr. Fritz. Mr. Fritz?
Hello, this is Dave Fritz. I assume you guys can hear me?
We can, Dave. Yep.
Okay, good. 3624 Barrington Drive. First of all, thank you for taking my comments and happy 2021 to all.
Thank you, Dave.
And I just have a couple of points to make here. I've made comments on this in the past. And I continue to believe this is a completely benevolent idea. However, it's bad economic policy for South Whitehall Township. As a South Whitehall Township taxpayer, I expect the township leadership to efficiently direct tax dollars to the township infrastructure and services. The township leadership should not be creating social programs to redistribute our limited taxpayer dollars. There were plenty of other social nets available at the county, state, and federal levels, plus many other private social service providers. And you mentioned that earlier with the Lehigh County dollars, and I'm not going to comment on it any further. I would say, however, and, you know, this is just my view, having sat through a number of these meetings over time, that I would strongly recommend to the leadership that, there's a book. It's called "The High Cost of Good Intentions." It's written by John Kogan, C-O-G-A-N. Mr. Kogan is a PhD public policy expert at the Hoover Institute. He's a public policy professor at Stanford University and a regular contributor to The Wall Street Journal and writes much about why political leaders love giving direct payments and why it's such a poor economic idea. This is a wonderful thing to do, however, it's bad economy. If, and by the way, it's not a, it's not a short read. It's not an easy read. If you don't have time for the book, Dr. Kogan has a series of YouTube lectures making the same points that I would suggest would be a good homework assignment in the evening for the group. Again, this is, this is an excellent idea when it comes to the good of people. It's a bad economic policy that in the township where we have very limited funds, that the funds go outside the infrastructure and services and start creating social programs. Thank you for your time. Again, Happy New Year to all, and I wish you the best. Stay safe.
Thanks, Dave. All right. It looks to me like Jess O'Donnell and Ashley want to say a few words, and then we're going to move forward with our, our motions and then ultimately the ordinance. Jess?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jessica O'Donnell here from the Chamber, as well as Ashley, Laura. We've been on this journey with you the last couple of months to talk about this partnership for small businesses. Dave, you just spoke about many programs that have been offered, especially Lehigh County. I will tell you all that I worked very closely with Lehigh County and also Northampton County. Lehigh County, yes, in fact, gave out $8 million to small businesses. But I will tell you, on this day today, I have many businesses reach out to me that did not receive funding from Lehigh County. Some businesses that did not apply because they didn't, they were doing okay in the beginning, and they wanted others that maybe were impacted a little bit more to receive funding. But now with the future still very much unknown, businesses are seeking funding. They need anything to pay their employees to keep the lights on. They are very scared. And through your leadership, this could quite possibly be a lifeline for these businesses. One less burden that they have to worry about. Again, we do at the Chamber initiatives like Restaurant Week. Again, we do at the Chamber initiatives like Restaurant Week, we do Small Business Saturdays, things like that. We've been really creative, taking risks during this pandemic to support our local businesses. But we still need to do more. And again, through your leadership, this could be that lifeline to save an employee, to put a meal on a table. To, again, these businesses are supporting our local organizations, T-Balls and, you know, our foundations in the area. And I know that from the Chamber, we have these lists, we have these contacts because they're reaching out to us as a business organization. Right around Christmas, we, the Chamber put out 100,000 of our own reserves as well as we had great partners, Embassy Bank, Capital Blue Cross. We did a restaurant relief fund. In an hour, we had over 300 applications and unfortunately we had to turn down people because we did not have enough money. So again, we have these lists. We want to be able to support through your leadership, businesses within South Whitehall Township. This could be a true lifeline for these businesses.
Thanks, Jess. Yeah, I, I second the fact that this is, this is an investment in our community. Our businesses are, are part of the lifeline to our economy. But that being said, thank you everybody for your comments and thoughts. We do have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly to continue working with the COVID grant but not using fiscal stability fund, considering reevaluating the grant or the grant program using COVID fund. And then we had a second from Commissioner Walk. So we have to handle that motion first.
Just to clarify the motion, it was to approve this, this program using the grant money. I am not asking for anything to be delayed or to rework anything. So if you would please check the wording on that.
I think it would need to be reworked, Commissioner Kelly, because with the COVID grant money, there is probably some differences in auditing that need to be considered. So we probably would have to go back and relook at the program because there are specific requirements that are attached to the COVID grant money. So I, I will say that. I'm not sure if this grant program would be, meet all the specifications of using COVID grant money, which I believe has already all been accounted for. So we'd have to pull that back anyway. So I think you'd have
Clarify again, Laura McCongey their COVID grant money for this purpose. And I did check with the Lehigh County on this and this is a approved use of the money to help businesses with COVID.
I'm not questioning the use of the money. What I'm telling you is I believe the use of the COVID grant money involves a series of, of auditing that has to go with it and that we would need to make sure is all included in this. So ultimately the township would have to make sure that we have all of those guidelines built into this. I'm not sure they are, but we will make the motion, I'll make the motion reflecting this, assuming that all the guidelines are met using COVID grant money. So I'll add that into it.
I would like to note for the board that the proposed ordinance, which has been advertised, states in section 65 dash four that the fiscal stability fund is the source of the $115,000. Therefore, if there's going to be a change to the ordinance to not use the fiscal stability fund, but instead to use COVID funds that are channeled from the federal government through the county to the township, that would be a change to the ordinance and would need to be re-advertised.
We'd have to go through the
If we were to advertise that, it would be
A motion
meeting.
And the motion has to be either, either or to accept it the way it is. Am I correct?
No, we, no, what would happen, Joe, is there's a motion on the floor. Joe, Attorney Zader just made clarity to it. The motion on the floor Diane had, had requested that stays the same, just changing where the, the monies would come from. Unfortunately, that can't work that easily. If you change the, the source of the funding, the ordinance that you have in front of you would have to be re-advertised, go through the, the, the advertise process timeframe and then come for a hearing and then go through the whole process again because you're changing the specific language in the ordinance. So it'd have to go through the whole ordinance process all over again.
I understand that, Commissioner Morgan. So what, what, based on what Attorney Zader has indicated or highlighted to us, the motion tonight would be to approve it or disapprove it with the funds, the $115,000 funds as they are in the ordinance. Am I correct that it's either yes or no based on the ordinance?
No, no, no. I'm sorry. I don't mean to make it confusing. We have two things. We have a motion. So we need to act on this motion first. Whether this motion passes or fails will determine whether or not, because you can't, we have an ordinance and a motion, two totally separate things. So the ordinance tonight is what we have in front of us with the COVID funds coming from the fiscal stability. What Diane is suggesting and made a motion for is can we, can we revise this ordinance or pass this ordinance as is, but not take the money from fiscal stability and take it from the COVID relief? We cannot do that because you would have to redo the whole ordinance and go back to the beginning because of the language change. So the motion, Diane, either you can keep it on the table and we'd have to go through the whole process again, should it pass, or you can pull it off the table. It's your choice.
No, I'd like it to proceed and Attorney Zader, if you would please, if we were to, for example, advertise this tomorrow to change that the funding would be from the COVID grant money from Lehigh County. So what would be the process then?
Sure, I'd be glad to explain that, Commissioner Kelly. If the board will be inclined to go the direction you're advocating, then we could advertise, put it out for advertising tomorrow such that at the next Board Commissioners meeting, the ordinance could be acted on with that change that instead of being fiscal stability would be the COVID funding. Now, separate from that, of course, I defer to Renee Bickel, Township Manager, and Steve Barret with regard to the finance and the accounting, the issue that Commissioner Morgan raised. I don't profess to have that information or knowledge. That's a separate question. My recommendation is that the motions in front of the board as we sit right now, which would be to adopt the ordinance with the change, that that really cannot pass and probably should not be voted on because you cannot enact the ordinance that hasn't been advertised. It needs to be advertised and that particular change hasn't even been drafted yet. So that'd be my recommendation.
Okay, in light of that legal advice, I would withdraw the motion and I would make a new motion that we would advertise the grant proposal that Commissioner Mobilio has brought forth with the funding to come from the COVID relief grant money.
A second.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, a second from Commissioner Walk. Can I have a roll call vote, Renee, please? Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Absolutely, positively no.
Commissioner Seton?
No.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
No.
All right, motion does not carry, which brings us back to the ordinance as originally presented as it stands today, which I would need a motion for possible adoption of the codified ordinance for the South Whitehall Township COVID-19 Relief Small Business Grant Program.
So moved. I'll make them.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Mobilio. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Seton. Can I please have a roll call vote, Renee? Commissioner Walk?
Nay.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Commissioner Morgan? Yes, ordinance passes. Thank you, everybody. You know, even in light of that conversation, I'm glad to see we can do great things for our local businesses and invest in them and ultimately invest in the economy of our community as a whole. So thank you. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners Morgan and Seton for your courage and for your belief and faith in the people of South Whitehall Township.
Thank you for initiating it, Commissioner Mobilio.
Yes, all the work you and everybody else did.
I just, I just
I'm sorry, Commissioner Mobilio, as I said previously, thank you for putting forward this very valuable program for the small businesses. I appreciate everything that you've done.
I would concur.
All right, so, um, right, moving right along. We have next, we have a variety of resolutions for consideration and possible action this evening. First is a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a minor plan entitled George Sam. I'm not sure who's presenting on this one tonight. Is, is, is it Dave?
Dave Manher.
Hi, Dave. I just see a little hand. There's a lot of boxes. So, hi, Dave, welcome.
Thank you. So this is a, it was a minor subdivision before the planning commission in November. It was basically moving some lot lines and dissolving a lot line to add some land to an adjacent property. There were a few waivers or deferrals related to the sidewalk and right of way. The, currently the house on the plan to the lower right, the existing right of way line goes through the porch and the ultimate right of line, right of way line actually goes through the house. So at this point, the board, the planning commission determined that a deferral was warranted because of the existing right of way lines and the ultimate right of way line. So it's deferred until a land development happens with that lot. So, and I don't know if there's anybody representing the applicant here to further discuss.
Is there, is there anybody?
An applicant present?
I did see Mark Luth from Lehigh Engineering somewhere earlier.
I did see Mark as well. Mark, are you here?
Commissioner Morgan, I just got a notification that he has left the meeting. He perhaps has, is having technical difficulties. I'm not sure, but I did just get a notification he left.
Okay, no problem. Um, well, that, that being said, was, was there anything else, Dave, or from the, from the engineering side? Oh, Mark Luth just arrived again. Mark, maybe he's with us now. He's in, he's out.
Call mode, I lost you.
No, we're here. I hear you, Mark.
Ready to make my big splash and the computer crashed.
We waited for you.
Thank you very much for that. It's, I think, and I, you know, of course I lost sound. So I missed everything you said. I'm not going to make you prove yourself. I'm assuming it was pretty straightforward. I, I think everything was recommended for approval from the planning commission. And of course, the township engineer, I'm just here to answer any questions or agree to any, anything I haven't heard.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. You know, I'll defer. Tony, did you have any, any comments to add to this?
No, this is quite straightforward. Five deferrals that were recommended by the planning commission and we actually have a quite short letter to comments and when I spoke to Mark about on the phone to clear up, it was done already. So I think that the township moves forward, it seems pretty close that we can sign the plans. So.
Are there any questions or comments from the board on this particular plan in front of us this evening? Doesn't, doesn't appear to be any. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
Hello, yes, I don't know how to write in the comments, but I did have a comment regarding the topic, if that's okay.
Can I, can I ask who this is and your address?
Sure, this is, yeah, sure. This is Dennis Gibbiser at 1640 North Filbert Street. I am actually the property that is adjoining the two of them, actually.
Hi, Dennis, welcome.
I am directly to the east. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to speak
Breaking up, Dennis.
Favor of the division. There were initially plans to develop the land that is on there right now. That would have been pretty undue hardship to a lot of the citizens. Oh, I am so sorry. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you. Oh, no.
Can you, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Sorry. Sorry. I just wanted to speak in favor of the division. I just wanted to speak in favor of the division. There were plans originally on that land to develop it quite extensively. That would have been, in my opinion, undue hardship to a lot of the citizens in Fernwood. And if this, this separation and absorption of the land by Mr. Legat goes forward, it will pretty much put an end to that. So I know that there are a lot of people who are citizens right here in Fernwood who would be very grateful if this was to happen. So that's all I would like to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dennis, thank you. We don't, we don't often get people who come in front of the board and give nice comments. That's great. Thank you. That's wonderful.
Thank you. It gives me joy to do it. So thank you.
Yeah. So are there any other
That's off my bucket list.
Comments from the board or from the public? I apologize. All right, that being said, do I hear a motion from the board to move forward granting preliminary final approval to a minor plan entitled George Sam?
I'll make the most.
Well, we had two there. You, you willing to give that one up to Commissioner Seton there, Commissioner Kelly? All right, so we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Seton, a second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Renee? Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan? Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Dennis. Have a good night.
Thank you very much to all of you.
All right.
Bye bye.
All right. Next this evening, we have in front of us a resolution for consideration of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township confirming the individuals nominated by the Volunteer Fire Company as special fire police, each for five-year terms. Um, this, our fire police, I just wanted to kind of make a special note about our fire police. They, they have such an important volunteer role within our community. And I think it's important to mention, our fire police assist the police department and the fire departments with traffic and crowds, crowd control at accident scenes, natural disasters, fires, or any other incidents requiring assistance requested by the police department. They also provide traffic control at pre-scheduled township events that draw large crowds like our, our recent lights in our, in our park, things of that sort. They are an amazing source, resource that selflessly serve our community with dignity and pride every day. We as a township rely heavily on them and are forever grateful for their service to our community. I just wanted to mention that. There's quite a few of them on this list in front of us today. But we are just so grateful for their dedicated service to this township and, and everything that they do. We are very appreciative. So are there any questions or comments on this particular resolution? Or Glenn or Chris, did you guys want to add anything to that in regards to the fire police?
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. I just wanted to echo your statements. We rely very heavily as a police department on our fire police and they are always there for us. They do a fantastic job. No matter whether it's raining, it's cold out, two in the morning, five in the morning, they always answer the call. And we are very, very grateful for their service to our community. They do a fantastic job.
They sure do. They sure do.
And, and I can't say enough about them either. They do a fantastic job and both of you have said everything, Dave. It's just a great job. Thank you.
Yep, yep, absolutely. It's, it's absolutely our pleasure and, and honor to bring this resolution in front of the full board for consideration this evening for these amazing men and women who help us out every single day. So if there's no other comments or questions from the board or from the public, I would move forward, I would make this motion to move forward with confirming those individuals to our fire police for a five-year term.
I just have one question, Commissioner Morgan. Is this a, are these new fire police or this is? I just had one question, Commissioner Morgan. Is this a, are these new fire police or this is a renewal of their last swearing in with the township?
I believe it's a renewal. Glenn and Chris, Commissioner Kitcheravich, I'll, I'll defer to you, but I believe it's, it's a renewal.
I, I do also, I believe it's a renewal for some of them, but there may have been some new members and, and they have worked with, with Glenn and through the police department also. Because although they are under fire, they're also police. So a lot of their stuff goes directly under the police department, not necessarily under the fire side. So they actually do a balancing act serving both sections of public service.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. It's kind of an update to the first-class township code that has recently been acted. So we wanted to make sure that although many of the, the folks have been, if not all of them have been sworn in by the magistrate, the new first-class township code indicates that they should be appointed by the Board of Commissioners and given their authority through them or the township. So this gives us an opportunity to make sure that everybody is under the same umbrella that the township has given everybody the authority based on the new first-class township code. That way there's no, no outliers out there. And we just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page with that. So.
Very good. Thank you. So I, I appreciate the service of all of them and I would be happy to make a, a second to Commissioner Morgan's motion.
All right. Any other questions or comments before we make a vote? All right. That being said, Commissioner Morgan made a motion. We have a second on the floor from Commissioner Kelly to move forward with the resolution confirming the individuals. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Renee?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Sorry, I got all, it was a little jumbled, messed up there for a second. My apologies.
Sorry. Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Aye. Motion carries and thank you again to each and every one of them who volunteer for us, for the township every day to keep us safe. Thank you. All right. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution establishing the contributions by police officers to the South Whitehall Township Police Pension Plan for the year January 1, 2021 to December 31, 2021. Renee, I believe you can, you can talk to this one?
Yes. This is a requirement of the police pension plan that allowable under a police pension plan is up to 5% of a contribution. But it is allowable for the collective bargaining agreement to, we are under a collective bargaining agreement and we are allowed to agree to a contribution less than 5%. So this year, the contribution in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement is, I believe it's 2.25%. Randy, can you scroll that resolution down? Pretty sure we're at the 2.25. Yep. So that is the police pension plan contribution for the 2021 plan year.
So thank you, Renee. Are there any questions or comments to Renee regarding this particular pension plan contribution? All right. Any from the public? All right. That being said, do I hear a motion re-establishing or establishing the contributions for, to the police pension plan for 2021? We had a motion on the floor. I think it was Commissioner Mobilio. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a motion requesting permission to award a bid for the Kohler Ridge Park Master Site Development Plan Project. Mr. Cookett, is he with us this evening?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening.
So what you have in front of you, Commissioners, is us asking that we proceed with a group that I will learn how to say their name. I'm gonna say it's Omnes to provide this master site development plan for this park. As you know, the township recently acquired this land. It's just shy of 26 acres and will soon be the township's second largest park. This firm comes with a wealth of experience. Their excitement and knowledge of, of the site, even in the RFP process, was pretty spectacular. And the, their references that I spoke to, which included the Director of Public Works in Easton and the Operations Manager for Allentown, who have experience working with this firm, gave them very high remarks in terms of their ability to accomplish projects on time, in budget, and being creative in the process, which is exactly what we are looking for. So with that being said, we respectfully request the Board of Commissioners award the contract to Omnes in the amount of $39,400 to create this master site development plan. Half of this was budgeted in this year's budget and the other half is DCNR funded.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. I, I will say this. This is, this is probably one of the most exciting park projects that we could potentially have around Short of Covered Bridge. It has some of the most amazing views over the valley, the Kohler Ridge Park area, if I remember correctly. And being considered a passive park has so much potential. It, it really is quite exciting. So I'd be anxious to see what they come up with, for sure.
Absolutely.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mr. Cookett on this particular request this evening?
I, I just had a question. So this company, if it's awarded to them, they're gonna come back to us with two designs and, and I guess who's feeding them the information to what, what the vision is for this park?
Sure.
I don't know about the park because it was purchased, what, a couple of years ago?
Correct. Yeah, the land has been acquired over the last few years. There was a steering committee put together and that steering committee for this project was myself. It was Dave Manhart, Randy Coke. It also included Dave Keppel from the School District Parks and Recreation Board and Keisha Champagne from the Parks and Recreation Board, as well as Marie Brown and Greg Duncan, who are on the Green Advisory Council and have a wealth of knowledge and expertise in, in green design infrastructure and other things that are gonna help with this project. Another main reason why we chose this firm of the 21 companies responded was because their unique ability to involve the public in this. And, well, for instance, they just did something they called the Pinwheel Project out in Easton. They did a Pocket Park Master Plan in Easton. And they had all these colorful pinwheels put up, different colors in different parks, which caught people's eye. When they got up to the said pinwheels, it had information on how the public could go online, take part in the survey, when the next public meeting was, all sorts of things like that. So they're very creative, very neat, and the public itself will be a big, big part of this process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Fantastic. Any other questions or comments regarding this particular motion?
I have a couple of questions. So, Mike, so this awards $39,000. What, what's the amount of the grant money for this phase of the project?
Well, it's gonna be just a one-phase project as far as getting the, the master plan done. It's all gonna be done for the $39,400. The grant was for $19,700.
Is that for this master plan or for a later phase?
Nope, for the master plan.
Okay. So the total's like $58,000?
No, it's $19,700 from the grant and $19,700 is our match. So it's a total of the $39,400.
Oh, I see. I gotcha.
Okay.
All right. Looking ahead, what's the expected total project cost with everything in the ground?
That is what this plan will give us. So this plan will give us, once we decide what exactly we're gonna look to do with this site, as far as the park, what it's gonna cost to do that and potential phasing options to do that and even potential funding sources to help offset those costs. At this point, I mean, it all depends what comes out of this plan as far as what the, you know, construction dollars would be.
Do you have even just from experience, order of magnitude cost for the whole project? You know, low end, high end?
Honestly, Mike, it's, it's kind of an impossible question at this point because if we decide we wanna keep it very nature-based and not do too much, add some trails, it, it could be minimal cost. If the public comes out and we decide a year from now, we're gonna build a swimming pool and community center on this lot, I mean, that, that would be a whole different ballgame for costs associated with this project.
Okay. And the scuffle work is truly the master plan? Any, anything further? No, no materials, no construction?
Correct. Just the master plan. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the, from the public?
I just have one more quick question before you go to the public, Commissioner Morgan. I'm sorry, Mike, it's, I forgot to ask. I, I read in your memo that there were 21 responses to the RFP. Was this bidder, the Omnes company, were they the low bid?
No, they were middle of the road, I would say. There was a, oh, I should know this off the top of my head. I wanna say 15, 16, 17. We're all right around this number, simply because I'm sure that they looked at what the grant was for DCNR and assumed what our budget was. There was a handful that were thrown out right away over budget and just, we simply could not afford them for this. But they, they were right in the ballpark with, I wanna say, 80 to 90% of the proposals received.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the public? All right. That being said, do I hear a motion this evening with permission to award the bid to Omni for the Kohler Ridge Park Master Site Development Plan Project? I think I said that wrong. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Renee? Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye. Mike, looking forward to seeing that, that come through. That, that's gonna be pretty exciting stuff. So.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you, Commissioners, and I will keep everybody updated with upcoming public meetings and other things revolving this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right. Uh, next this evening, under correspondence and information items, we have boards and commissions informational items. I will note, normally we, we report out on this, I believe, in the second, well, it is the second meeting of the month, isn't it? I'm all scripted when I did. So we have two alternate civil service positions still we are looking for. And recently, we, with the recent retirement of a one, Mr. David Dumbar, who was an amazing volunteer for the township for many, many years. He will be greatly missed. We now have a open position currently on our planning board and also one on our shade tree. So the way the process works is certainly if anybody is interested in these particular volunteer positions, please make sure to go to our website and fill out an application. We also have some applications that are currently still active that we've had and they will also be considered. Again, we have two alternate on civil service, one on planning and one on shade tree. If you cannot find the application on the website, please make sure and call the township building, ask for Tracy, and she will help you through the process. So I just wanted to report out on that. We did have a, a shift in our Green Advisory Committee meeting due to the holiday. So I don't have anything to report tonight. We will be meeting on Monday, the 25th. And I will report out at our next meeting on anything that comes out of that group. So that's all I have on boards and commissions. Just wanted to share with you those open positions. And I do lie. Um, I did provide back out again for the second time, some information on the process and also a more in-depth review that Commissioner Mobilio and I have been working with Renee and staff on in regards to volunteer boards and commissions. And I provided that on behalf of myself and Commissioner Mobilio to the rest of the board this week for consideration and review. More to come on that. So Renee, did, well.
Commissioner, yes. I'm sorry, I just had a comment regarding the open positions on civil service, shade tree and planning. Is that something that, we can go ahead and just put a quick link on the homepage of our website for people that aren't on this call tonight, letting them know that there are some volunteer positions available?
I'll defer to Renee on how easy it is to put that quick link on, but we can certainly probably put a banner up or something like that. We can, we'll figure something out to, to make, draw some attention to that as well.
Thank you. I did want to acknowledge, I did receive your email regarding the update on the process for filling boards and commissions. And thank you for the work that you and Commissioner Mobilio and staff have done. I guess I have a question. We don't have very defined subcommittee rules for fire, fire subcommittee, finance and interview. I would like to suggest that we have a workshop so that we can sit down as, well, virtually a board of five and talk about the goals for the different committees and the processes that we can work together to come up with a, a plan that works for the township.
So, and that, that's, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So the plan is staff and legal will be taking a look at them first and letting us know the basics that need to be in them based on the first-class township code and anything else that we have in place as far as ordinances. And then at that point, we'd be able to get together as a group, as commissioners, in a workshop and discuss them further. So that would happen. But we're gonna give staff and legal a chance to look at them first so that we have a basic structure to go off of.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood. I thought you were gonna bring it to the board in February for consideration.
In February, if you read my email correctly, the only thing for consideration is the process for how we interview and do all that. And that hasn't changed. It's just putting it in writing. That's the only thing. The total review and the, the review of the expectations, the, the volunteer committee descriptions, all of those things are what are the in-depth review and we'll have more discussion on those.
Okay. And that's something we'll schedule a workshop for. We have the second one.
After staff and legal look at it first, provide us with a basis and then we can get together in a workshop and do that. What will be coming in front of us in February is the actual process, the interview process, the whole process that we put into writing that's been in place for some time.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. All right. Next.
So.
Yes, sir.
But thank you for that. Could, could, could you, you probably already said it. What is the next step? And in particular, what the board needs to do? I know what you want, you want, you want feedback, but while you're published, but what's the next step for us? It's this meeting in two weeks.
Any feedback that you have. What's, what's gonna happen on the second meeting in February, we plan to have the interview process will be on, on for motion, adoption, whatever, solidifying it. What's going to be the ongoing process, because it's incorporated with our updates to our website, will be, we're in the process of reviewing all of the volunteer boards and commissions, descriptions, expectations, outlines. So legal and administration will be looking at them first to make sure we have the basic, the basic structure there. And then we can set up a workshop that all of us can have comments and thoughts to put into that after that's been set up. So that's the next steps, Mike.
Thank you.
You got it. All right. So next this evening, we have a public notice of a planning commission meeting on Thursday, January 21st at 7:00 PM. Dave, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Uh, no, not really.
All right. All right.
Tomorrow.
All right, everybody. Um.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan, I do want to remind people that we have scheduled a workshop that we advertised for next Wednesday night at 6:00 PM regarding the notice for the land development process. We did mess that up a little bit in the sense that we have zoning hearing board at 7 o'clock that night as well. So we have people kind of crossed over. What we would like to do is continue with the meeting. Workshops begin at 6:00 PM. We're calling to, we have a document that we're just finalizing that'll be distributed Friday and put on the agenda. That, that goes over the current process that we use. It goes over what's required by the MP. and then some suggestions. So if we can start the dialogue next week, if you're still all inclined, we will only have till 6:45 for that dialogue, but perhaps it begins a dialogue and then we'll have to pick that up at another workshop.
I think that's, I think that's a great idea, Renee. At least get it started and get some, some information out there for us to start to digest and go over, come up with some thoughts and ideas that when we set up the next meeting, everybody can come to the table with, with some constructive discussion. Everybody agree?
Yes.
Okay, great, great.
And to confirm, Renee, you had also sent in that same email that we were going to have a Where's Damn workshop on February 24th. That was a tentative date. Does that, does that still stand?
Well, I have to check. I think there was a reason we don't typically have the meetings on the fourth Wednesday because of zoning hearing board. So that's a tentative date, but we still have not heard from DEP on the status of our permit. And again, as we've kind of discussed, it will be a much more valuable conversation and dialogue if we know the status of the permit. So I have placed calls out to our engineers who are working on that permit and asked for an update if they have any inkling from the DEP when we will hear back from that. So, so again, it's kind of, you know, I mean, maybe in a few weeks we'll hear something definitive about the permit, but keep you posted in the next few meetings about that date.
Thank you. And Commissioner Morgan, there also is a zoning hearing board. I don't know if you want to officially announce that for next Wednesday at 7:00 PM as part of the announced meetings.
Well, I, I think you just did. So there you go. All right. So we have another, as, as referenced by Commissioner Kelly, thank you, zoning hearing board coming up as well. All right. Next, under direction and discussion items, I don't have anything on the agenda. So we can move right into Renee, old business. Would you like to take care of the updates? And then the, we, after that, we'll go right into our department reports.
Sure. Randy, do you have that picture? Okay. Well, I'll start. So, so just to give you a picture of the campus renovation project, this is actually the back of the building that typically individuals don't see, but wanted to be able to show you the status of, of the renovation. The front of the building, there was a bit too many trucks to get a picture of when I was there. So this is the building. We continue to make progress. I mean, the initial timeline, I believe, of the project when we first started this was about an eighth date. We continue to plan to transition back to the building now mid-February. Unfortunately, with the second wave of COVID spiking, we have had some issues. We had to close the project once in the last month and a half for two days because of a COVID outbreak amongst workers who were in the building and just, you know, sanitize the building and that type of stuff for it to remain, for people to come back to. So that put a little bit of a delay. And unfortunately, some of the delays and some of the bigger things that we're waiting for right now are some of the vendors, like our glass provider had COVID issues in their workshops, which prevented some of our work from being done. So again, we continue with the goal, hopefully, of starting to transition back. It will take a little bit of time to transition back into the building. One floor of the building is in the process of getting the cubicles installed. But again, you know, but very good progress overall. The far end of the building where you see the garage doors are, that is the police department and those are the Sally ports above that area is, that is addition. Those garage doors and the portion above that there are, is part of the addition. And that top part there where you see the windows above the garage doors, that is the public meeting room. So obviously around the front of the building will be that public entrance will be at this side of the building, this end of the building going forward. So again, good progress. The public meeting room is scheduled to be one of the things that is completed a little bit later. It's well in progress now, but again, I was there today. They're starting to build the diet. Beautiful architecture actually inside that room. I'm really excited for the public to see that room when, when we go back into meeting. So again, that is anticipated with a March 1 completion. So in terms of budget, we are currently, we, well, let's, as of the, as of November 30th, which we're at the billing process. And our Bracy Construction, which is our prime general contractor, we've been 83% through the contract, which means we've been billed for 83% of the contract so far. Under Dole Temp, which was the HVAC vendor, Dole Temp is, is 99% done. They are just about wrapped up. Again, that work happens earlier. GR Noto, who is our electrical contractor, is about 89% complete. Myco Mechanical, which is the plumbing, they were 93% done as well. The, the portion that is not complete which is expected is the site work, which is paving the streets around the campus and also our, the yard and garden center. With the weather changing, we will obviously have the paving done, but there are some delays perhaps a little bit in the yard and garden center and we will keep you posted on that. Our anticipation was to bring that yard and garden center back to Walbert and Ridgeview around the May 1 gate, but that may still be up in the air a little bit based on some of the weather and some of the delay with the concrete that's going in there. There's this very thick concrete for construction and for the weight of the bins that are going to be setting on it. So, so that's where we're at with the percentage. In terms of the actual finances of the project, we are literally on target for exactly, right now, we are on the contract prices. We have just about gone through our allowances, but again, we don't anticipate any large change in anything going forward. Our allowances, unfortunately, which is standard, has been spent in the front end and the demolition of the project. And we had a lot more remediation. And so again, but again, overall, the project is exactly on target to where it was anticipated at this point. So that is an overview of the project and where we're currently at. Know if anybody has any questions?
Just a quick question. So like last report, the, there are $55,000 allowances remaining. I think what you're saying, Renee, is that those allowances have been used. Is that correct?
Correct. We're, we're about out of, you know, in the delta of allowances, we're about there. And allowances at this point, like I said, we don't anticipate many issues at this point. And again, you know, unfortunately, we like allowances to go towards stuff that's more valuable. Unfortunately, in this situation, a large portion, we spent over an additional $60,000 in remedial, remediation work, which obviously was not, not where we wanted to spend allowance. And then, but that's, again, we are on target for the contract that we have for the overall construction contract, Mike.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Renee on the status of the, of the project? Looking, looking like it's, it's, it's all coming together. Thank you.
I'm just going to roll on. We're going to give some of these other reports, credit card report, Dave Manhart. We have some really exciting news once Dave gets to his report, so I'm not going to steal his thunder. But moving on to my, to the executive department report, one of the things that we typically do as an organization internally is recognize our retirees internally as a group. And unfortunately with COVID, we have not been able to do that, but I did want to recognize three Public Works employees who retired. We had three retirements in the last 10 days of Public Works employees. Just impressive is that the three individuals, their combined years of service with South Whitehall, 125 years of service for the three employees. So each one of them was over 40 years. And interestingly, each one of them chose to retire almost on or near their start date. So respectively, 40, 40 and 44, 40 and 41 years for James Ballyett, Jim Ballyett, Rusty France, and then George Yonachko. Jim did a lot of work on, we always joke with Jim, he loves spray paint. He's the PA, was the PA one call and the right of way guy you would see out there. George Yonachko, George knew everything with sidewalks and maps in the township. And Rusty France, cars, he was the mechanic that keeps, kept our cars on the road. So they will all be missed and hopefully, you know, we can celebrate them a little more post pandemic. So, but just wanted to recognize them because we didn't get to do traditionally what we do internally as a staff. But again, three incredible gentlemen who, who spent their careers with South Whitehall and are much deserving of their retirement.
That's fantastic, Renee. Thank you for sharing that with us. And yeah, those, those years of service and experience will be greatly missed and much appreciated for all the time and dedication they gave to the township. Looking forward to maybe a little more formal celebration, like you said, post pandemic. Thank you.
All right. So Commissioner Morgan, to move on, somewhat, like I said, our old business updates, we're going to, if we move to Dave Manhart, we can talk some exciting news about credit cards and website and see some stuff.
Great.
Dave Manhart is getting ready.
In the house. There you go.
Dave Manhart is ready. So credit card update, at the last meeting, I kind of talked about all the different pieces that we have going that are all kind of related to the credit card project. One of those pieces is the website. In addition, the, with the credit card payments, there's the customer self-service, citizen self-service, which is a Munis product, which is our internal, it's our enterprise solution for the township. At the last meeting, I said that we had a successful transaction. It was only a partially successful. It only talked from Munis to Paymanis. Since then, we've had a successful transaction the other way. So Paymanis talking back to Munis. And then earlier today, we successfully posted that bill. So we've gotten to the point where, you know, we have the initial test runs. The next step in the process is to kind of do some more intensive testing, seeing what happens when people put multiple bills in a cart and pay those and seeing where the funds go. So that piece is moving along and I can actually see the light at the end of the tunnel on that one, which is kind of exciting. It's been a long time. So the other piece. Absolutely.
Wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, we've been working a long time on credit cards and I really think at this point, we're at the point, we've switched solutions midway. Their staff has changed twice on those assigned to credit cards. So this is really a comprehensive solution that we really feel confident that residents will like. And we're just doing an extremely large amount of testing, obviously, for the accuracy of the posting of those payments. So, so again, I think it's, it's going to be a product taking longer than we had ever anticipated. Because new solutions and updates and where, where our software was and needing different updates, we finally have able to have a comprehensive system in place that are all talking together. So, so we're excited about that.
Yeah. And just to piggyback on that, the hardest part is frankly, getting people to talk to each other. You know, and that's been the challenging part of the project is getting these, we're dealing with multiple vendors and getting all the people to go in the same directions. We're finally getting there. The, the website, so the website becomes the platform for the citizen self-service portal, which is where you'll get access to your bills. And then that'll transfer, from there you go into the Paymanis, which is the credit card processing. So the website is also a project that is coming near the end. Well, websites never end. It's always a work in progress, but we're getting close to the launch. At the last meeting, I only really showed the homepage. I didn't really dive in too much. So tonight I can dive in a little bit more. We have our departments pages. All the pages are set up. We're, the team is currently populating the text. So we're migrating text from the old website to the new website. We have, I think we're probably about 80% done on it. We have all the boards of commission, boards and commissions pages set up. Services page, we need to do some work in this I want to. The idea of the I want to is if somebody wants to pay a bill, for example, they can go to this page and there'll be the link to pay to the bill. This is what is referred to as a hero slide. It'll scroll between different photos and information can be put on this section and links. So if we have a event coming up, we can put an advertisement or a picture that links to that event. And then this can, this can be set to auto scroll with the play button. There are, they call these home button, homepage buttons. So the idea of these buttons are commonly, like the most commonly used things on the website. Right now, we just have it set for trash and recycling, building permits, parks and rec, board docs, ordinances, and then the police page. This capital campaign is another feature that can be either offer on. So if we have some, something we want to highlight that can be turned on and off. We have a news section and an event section. And that's kind of the lay of the land of the homepage. I could probably spend a lot of time on this because there's a lot in here. But in the interest of time, I'm just going to kind of show how I set up all of the boards and commission pages. So one of the things that the, the solution we went with Granicus offers is the ability to, they have a document central, which allows us as a staff to manage documents. In the case of boards and commissions, we have this documents widget here that can list any document from the, related to that board or commission. So in this case, we're on Board of Commissioners. Only the Board of Commissioners folder is shown. And we'll be able to archive meetings this way. And this will be our meetings that happened before. We get Peak, which is the Agenda Management and Meeting Software, which is the other piece that we're working on. But the nice thing about it is all the documents are right here on the page. And then also all of the future meetings for that commission. So that's kind of set up the same way for all of the commissions. Zoning hearing board set up the same way. Other documents can be added to that document central. Zoning Hearing Board set up the same way. Other documents can be added to that document central, meeting dates. So that was one of the things I wanted to share. The other neat thing about the website is the categories. So as long as the, let me go over to the events. By using categories, we can toggle through the different meeting dates. So if we're looking for a specific meeting, we can just toggle through these dropdowns and that meeting will come up. I'm striking out on all the ones I'm picking here. But there we go. There's a planning commission. So these categories work for news events, news calendar events, and photos and some other things on there. So that's one of the really neat things about the website is that we can filter through different information. And I think that's kind of all I really wanted to show tonight. Timeframe, we're looking at within, definitely by the beginning of February. We hope to go live with it. Again, it's, it's always a work in progress. One of the things we did is consciously kept things clean and simple for this first go around. Our text is, you know, it's just the text. We weren't adding images at this point because there's other widgets. As we get more familiar with the functionality, we'll be updating the website to reflect that functionality. So that's kind of all I have on the website.
Looks great, Dave. Definitely more user friendly than our existing, which is certainly what we're looking for. Lots of opportunities for banners and places to post, you know, new information. You know, even, even in light of, in what Commissioner Kelly had mentioned, a place for us to post certain things that are happening right now. So that, that'll be a great addition to getting information out. So excellent. Thank you very much for showing us what you have so far.
And then for community development report, I just kind of gathered some figures from 2020. We would have thought that we would have seen more of a decrease in our activity in the building and in the building and land use and land development realms. We had processed 970 permits last year and approximately 70, 70 new home CEOs. And that represents a slight decrease from the year before. There were 10 zoning hearing board cases. Prior years, there were about 17. So that did decrease some. 25 planning commission cases, and that is an increase from the 2019 number of cases. And then we also worked on the comp plan. We finished up the, where should we grow? Currently in the how should we grow, getting ready to transition to the next phase. So that concludes my community development report.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. Can I just ask a question? David, thank you for that report. When do you expect that we will be taking the next step in the comp plan process?
We will discuss it at the planning commission meeting, but we're looking to get the next, we're calling it the Phase Four kickoff meeting in the end of February. So we'll kind of discuss dates at the planning commission meeting. Hopefully, we can settle on a date and we can get that rolling. And that'll kick off the next phase.
Thank you.
Hey, Dave.
Yes.
Is that, is that Phase Four, is that after the how will grow phase?
The, yes. The kickoff is kind of during that how. And then the idea is we'll have a meeting that presents the results for the how, of the how indirect the working groups into that, into their roles.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's where I was going with my question.
Yeah.
So, it's so, for those who don't know, could you just give a brief description of, there's going to be several working groups.
Yeah, okay.
Like chapters.
The kickoff meeting for Phase Four is really to present the different working groups. So the idea is we'll have working groups on specific topic areas that are required to be in a comprehensive plan. And the idea is people can, you know, focus on their interest areas. So somebody that's interested in natural resources can devote some time to that working group to come up with recommendations for the new comp plan. And that kickoff meeting is kind of structured to introduce all of those topics, allow people to kind of pick which working groups they'd like to be involved in. And then after that, we would launch the, there would be like a working group kickoff meeting, I suppose. But if we use too many kickoff meetings, that doesn't sound as what, that's good.
Yeah.
Kind of.
The other, so that, that's good to, you know, organize it into, I guess you're saying a workshop and communicate the working groups there. Will the working groups be communicated by other means for people who aren't at that workshop? Because this, you know, this is where we really branch out, broaden it out to get a more public input. Some people's interest in their expertise.
Yep. And this is kind of, you know, I've mentioned it, I think at the planning commission meeting, that this is where we, you know, the public gets the opportunity to kind of roll up their sleeves and, and start getting to work. The idea was to introduce these, these working groups. I'm sorry, Mike, I got a little sidetracked. Was there a question?
Oh, my, yeah, I'm sorry. My question was, will there be other ways at the, the fact that working groups are being formed? And, you know, at least what they are.
Yeah, so.
Can see that and then decide whether they want to join, aside from attending this workshop.
Yep, yep. So one of the things that we've been working with is because everything's going to have to be virtual, we've engaged Michael Baker International that uses, it's called WebEx, which is a very robust online virtual meeting platform that allows for different breakout sessions. So the idea is we'll have a gathering space and then different breakout sessions for each of the groups. We come back and rotate groups so people can go to multiple breakout sessions. And then all of those sessions will be recorded and posted. There's different, one, there's different potentials on how we post those. But they will all be posted online. So people that are interested in something can look it up and watch that breakout session. And then there'll be opportunity for signups at the, after each of the breakout sessions.
Dave, I have a, I have a quick question and not, I don't, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds on this because this probably could be a very long discussion. But I just want to make sure that, you know, everybody on this call and the public understands and that I fully understand, these working groups, we're going to make sure that we include all, a balance of, a representation of all dynamics of the township, which would include all the stakeholders, whether it be a resident, you're going to have different age brackets of residents, businesses, landowners, all different types of those dynamics to make sure that we have a representative view coming into this. That's, we're working hard to make sure of that, correct?
Yes, and that's part of the reason where, one of the advantages of holding it online is people are, it's more flexible, especially if we have the recording set. They can log on at any time and watch a recording. So that's kind of the intent is to throw, put it out there more and allow the opportunity for people that are busy, you know, with the kids, taking the kids to and from soccer practice and things like that, the opportunity to contribute.
Yep. I just want to make sure that as we continue through the process, because this, it's such a, such a comprehensive, you know, process that we're going through. And I think it's great that we're making sure that we include all dynamics, all age groups, all types of stakeholders, whether it be a resident, a business, a landowner, you know, young, old, whatever, like schools, you know, every, every piece of anybody who has input into the, the comprehensive plan as a whole. But you, you answered my question. You are working to do that and that's, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else for Dave, for community development? All right. Who do we have made for finance? Is Scott with us tonight?
I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Hey, Scott.
How are you?
Good, welcome. We're ready for you.
Thank you. For the finance department, what we are up to right now is we're in the middle of our year-end financial close process for 2020. I've been learning a lot about our financial system and I'm inputting, we just got our budget inputted for the year into our financial system. So that was a learning process for the team, as this was my first year doing that. And we're just getting the 2020 financial statements and we'll have those ready for a look at the February 11th Finance Committee meeting. I don't have anything new and exciting like the website, but we did do some credit card payment.
It's okay, Scott. All good stuff. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan. Yes. Commissioner Morgan, do you want me to answer the, the question that came up before we get too far beyond on the credit card processing?
That would be excellent. Thank you, Renee. Go ahead.
I was just gonna type it in. It's okay. All right.
And Dave, I don't remember off the top of my head what the actual fee is, but yes, there is a pass-through fee to the residents for the use of a credit card. Again, an alternate to you to, and I can't speak for your specific bank, but again, an alternate is using the bank check to pay your payments. And typically with your relationship with the bank, there's not a fee for that. But yes, there will be a fee for the use of a credit card.
Thanks, Renee. All right.
May I ask a question of Scott before we move on to the next department?
Sure.
I know he probably doesn't have the information tonight, but in future meetings, I wanted to ask if we could include the open space fund to report out to the board?
Just like the balance?
Just the balance. Yeah, I think that had been done in the past, some of the meetings I've been to.
Can we just include that on the monthly financials?
That would be fine. Sure. And
We'll get it on there.
That's great. Thank you. And can you update us on the status of our audits at this time as well?
I will defer to Renee on that question.
Sure, as we spoke about before, our deadline and timeframe was really the end of the year to have it wrapped up. We meet on a regular basis with our auditor and actually we are moving into 2018 at this point. So again, those will be presented as a whole, as a group, all of the years. So we are moving into 2018.
So. So Renee, I'm just asking a clarification. I didn't realize they were being held as a group. So you're saying 2016 is done?
They work on multiple ones. The auditor has to release them all out once they come out of review there. For active work for us as a township, we are into the 2018 year.
Is, okay, is 2016 audit complete?
It is in audit, auditors. From our end, it's complete. Once we finish our work, the auditors do a lot of their work back and forth. And it goes through a review, as any professional audit company goes through a review process at the auditing company through their chain of command for audit approval. 16 is there, 17 is being worked on. It's not in their approval process yet, but it's just about complete. And for us, our standpoint, we're working on the 2018 year with the auditor and their data request.
Okay, thank you for that. That's more than we've heard previously. So I'm still interested in, is there a timeframe for completing both the township work and the auditor's work for 2016 short of completing all four years?
I can't speak, I can't speak for the auditor's office and when they come out of review.
All right. So we'll be able to discuss that at our February 11 meeting?
I would imagine because yeah, I, I can't speak for when they release it out of their audit process.
Okay. Thank you for that.
All right. Um, but there was, Renee, there was one question in the chat from Joanne. I don't know what Joanne's address is.
I have one more question. I'm sorry. So we've recently learned that DCED, the latest township filing, is 2011 is, and, and not 2015. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so we actually have more outstanding audits. Or let me, let me just give you some information here and then you can help us understand. So for quite a while, we've thought that the four-year outstanding audits were 2016 through 2019. And now we learned that 2012 through 2015 were never filed with DCED. Although the township records indicate that some of those audits were complete. Like we found records that 2012 was complete, 2013 is complete. So were those audits complete? Were 2012 and 13 complete? And just never filed with DCED? And if that's the case, why, why would that be? Or were they never finished? I know it's history, but just it'd be, it'd be interesting to know what occurred here since these were the years, you know, just prior to the embezzlement in 2014 and 15 are the years right after the embezzlement.
Mike, I can't answer that question without going back. I was not in this role at that point. I think some people made the assumption that 14 and 15, the township has worked with the DCED and we have agreed to go 2016 and forward. So again, that, that's what we're actively working on and that's, that's what we're doing.
Okay. So let me, let me just ask it again or pose it a little bit different. I'm not, you know, I'm not probing here. So let me ask Commissioner Morgan, since you were on the board when the embezzlement occurred. on the board, when the embezzlement occurred. Well, I mean, do you, do you have some history around the 2012 and 2013 audits? You know, the township meeting minutes say they were complete, but they were not filed. Do you have any information about why they might not have been filed?
Mike, I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head, no. But I will tell you, Renee's reference to the conversations with the bank, and as part of the, the investigation and internal audit review process, the decision was made to go back five years of financial statements, which brings us to that 2016 point. The DCED and the, the auditor general, everybody's aware of that was the starting point to use to go back and do the more extensive review and of audits moving forward. Prior to that, you know, what, what the finality was on any of those audits, I can't speak to that on this call. I don't know off the top of my head. But I do know that both our auditors, the DCED, they're all well aware of that, starting that platform to start from 2016 moving forward for the review process.
Right. Okay. All right. I understand that. All right. Thank you for answering these questions. I just like to say, we all look forward to getting these last four audits complete, and hope whatever, whatever the reasons are for why they're not complete, you know, in a more timely fashion. Hopefully, we can have a discussion like on the finance committee, perhaps with the auditor, to talk about, you know, what we need to do to complete the audits in the future in a more timely fashion, which, you know, is that 90 days into the following year. So thank, thank you for answering these questions.
And just to confirm, the meeting that we're having on February 11 for the finance committee will include our auditing company. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, we
And there will be some of the more nuanced things that I can't speak about, like from years past and whatnot. I was hired in the summer of 2019, so a lot of these questions, the auditors know much more about.
Okay, so they were the auditors back then in 16 or 15, so they'll have the history for us?
Correct.
The auditors have been, those auditors have been here, yes. And yeah, as we stated in our email, the auditors will be participating in that.
Yeah, I thought it was tentative. I didn't know if that was confirmed. So thank you for confirming.
All right. Any other questions? There was a question here. Joanne, I'll let you, if you're on the line, you want to ask your questions, or give your address or your information, we can ask your questions for you if you can, if you can ask them.
Hi, I'm assuming you can hear me. I don't have a camera. I apologize.
No problem, Joanne.
This is Joanne Markowitz. I live at 833 South Hillview Road, Allentown, PA. My first question is, and it was kind of covered, but I'm gonna ask it again anyway. The first question is, to what state department is the township responsible for submit annual audits? And I'm gonna assume it's the DCED. According to the DCED, the last audit submitted to them from South White Hill Township was 2011. I ask, is this correct? Does anyone on the board know that South White Hill Township is, has been flagged for noncompliance with the DCED due to no audits being submitted since 2011? And I believe that also means that we're not allowed to apply for any grants, because we've been flagged noncompliant. Does anyone know anything about that?
Hi, Joanne, it's Scott. I'll just speak to the grant question first, I believe. In terms of being flagged for grants, and not being allowed to apply for grants, that is not entirely true. We have applied for many grants in recent years and gotten much grant money as well in recent years. So I hope that answers that question. But to the other one, yeah, we have been aware of that, that the Department of Community and Economic Development, yes, is the, is the department to which we file audits. And we are also aware that audits haven't been filed for some time. And we are vigorously working to correct that and amend that, and vigorously working to put into place a process with which to have an audit done each year in a timely manner. That is, that was a primary reason why I was brought on board, and that is a primary reason why I do my work at the township, why I exist to serve the taxpayers here in South White Hill Township.
So, Joanne, I'll just add this to your questions as well. The, the DCED is well aware of the status of the submittal of audit reports, and they're also well aware of the situation as to why those reports are being redone and reviewed, and going through a more rigorous audit, audit program as a result of the issues we, we had back in 2012. In regards to what Scott had mentioned, we are not, not receiving grants as a result of this. You know, we are in a, in good standings in regards to that. And again, I just want to emphasize, I know the township is working directly with the DCED, so they are well aware of everything that's going on in regards to this review process happening right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You got it. You got it. Um, any other questions or comments? All right. So moving on then, we have Park and Recreation, Randy. Are we gonna do Park and Rec and Public Works together? Would that be you, Randy? Are we gonna do it separate?
I can go either way. I can say some exciting things about the Parks and Rec Department, and turn it over to Chief, and jump back into Public Works when he's done. Or I can just keep talking for both departments here until we get
Why don't we combine the two, and that way we might be able to save some time?
I'll start with Parks and Rec, since it's on the agenda first, if that's okay. So, real quick update, we are hoping to have an official ribbon cutting for the new Cover Bridge Park playground on Thursday, May 13 at 4:00 PM. I realize that's a little later in the year than anticipated. We got a couple, couple minor things to wrap up down there, obviously with the winter weather and COVID things slowed down a little bit. But we should be officially being able to cut that ribbon on Thursday, May 13, 4:00 PM. So save that date if you could. The restroom project that has been ordered, we are looking for a late March, early April installation date for that. So we intend, our intention would be to have that project wrapped up as well for the ribbon cutting of the playground. The Jordan Creek Greenway, quick status report on that for you as well. We have submitted our ENS plan, or also known as the Erosion Sedimentation Plan, Talia County Conservation District for Approval. We are likely applying for a DCNR grant in 2021 to support the construction of the greenway from the existing boardwalk section to Lap Road. That's phase one of this project, if you remember from the many discussions we've had during the public meetings about this. Phase two, obviously, we continue working with local landowners and the high school. Our intent there is to take phase two of this project from Lap Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard, which would then give a safe route from the Parkland High School for students to frequently visit Covered Bridge Park. So our, our local high school would now be connected to South White Hall's largest park, which is exciting. We're starting to develop our RFP for the Parks Recreation Trail Open Space Plan. And just a quick update, keep in mind, we have many events and programs coming up in the spring and summer. The first on the, the first event we'll be doing this year is our annual Fisher Derby. That's gonna be April 17. That's one of my favorite events. I hope everybody has an opportunity to come out to that event. We are looking for volunteers, so, so please join us if you are willing in April. Also, we're kind of thinking outside the box because of COVID, we're working on some virtual programs, such as virtual cardio workouts, computer coding, and some art classes. And obviously, our planning efforts are COVID-dependent there. But wanted to bring one more thing to everybody's attention. Every now and then, we like to promote this, because there's some really good information out there. But on our website, we do have at-home recreation. That is a list of activities and different programs that you can do with your family, and actually not have to, you know, be around other individuals. So it's a, it's a COVID-friendly recreation program. And again, that's on the Parks and Rec homepage for the, on the website. So take a look at that if you're looking for something to do.
And for those of you who don't know, Randy, there is a zip line at the Covered Bridge Park. And if anyone wants to see a video of my wife riding the zip line, it will be posted to the township website, my homepage.
Something tells me she's in the background, kind of not so happy with you right now, Commissioner Mobilia.
You might be right, Randy. You might be right.
Well, I think we can top that. I saw Chief Dorni in that spinner thing. It wasn't pretty. It wasn't pretty at all.
I deny that.
All right. Okay, Randy, did you have more, anything else?
Nope. If there's any questions, I can answer any questions about the Parks and Rec Department before I jump into Public Works.
Randy, I just had one question. I think you said you're working on a Park and Rec Open Space Plan. Did I hear you correctly?
That's correct, Commissioner Kelly. We did budget for that this year. That's gonna be an update to that, the plan that we, we last did in 2009.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Randy, moving right along.
Sure, I'm gonna keep going with Public Works. So currently, the Public Works Department is working on getting the lights down in Covered Bridge Park from the holiday festivities down there. We're also working on our bridge inspection punch list throughout the township, and water station routine maintenance, and our overall system management for the water and source system. We are currently working with SSM to design and engineer a water main replacement project in the Bridgeview Terrace neighborhood that is budgeted this year. So that's something we're very excited about as staff, because they've had over a dozen water breaks there in that neighborhood in the past two years. In fact, we just had another one today. Thank goodness, we have such a great staff in Public Works. They were able to get that repaired in what I would consider record time. And I also wanted to take a real quick moment to also recognize those three individuals that Renee mentioned earlier, Jim Ballyett, George Janosco, and Russ France. Just a tremendous group of individuals right there. I know Herb still has Jim and George, and probably Russ on speed dial. The three of them were a tremendous historical knowledge resource for, for all of us here in the township. They, they had a great memory of all of our development projects, our easements. And so, you know, for new staff coming in, they were always leaned on and very much appreciated. So we're gonna miss those guys. I think I speak for the entire Public Works Department. We're all gonna miss them very, very much, and we hope they stay in contact. So if you do see them out and about, please share your appreciation with them as well. I know they'd appreciate that.
Thanks, Randy. Any questions for Randy? All right. Let's move right along to our Police Department. Chief Dorni, what do you got for us?
Okay, I will admit that the park is very fun for even younger adults like myself. So that's fun to do at the park. But just to go over some December stats real quick, I will apologize in advance, they are not very thorough, because on December 15 of last year, we switched over our records management system that we use going from CODI to 23 projects. So the historical data has come over, but it's somewhat difficult to navigate to try to get some of the statistical data yet. We haven't received the training on all the analytics yet. So we're still working on doing that. But the transition's been very smooth, for the most part. It's a very robust system that does a lot, very searchable. We just are still working our way through it. So about a month in, and the officers are very adept at writing reports and being able to do what they need to do on their end. But with that, December, we had 793 reports that we took, made 25 arrests, and just like every other month of the year, our EMS assists are our number one call type with 212 of those. So I can't really get into too much of the details as far as the UCRs and some of that, because it's in two different systems, and it wasn't able to come over properly. So we're still working on trying to get those bugs out. But I do want to touch base on a couple other things that are very important to us. I want to certainly thank St. Luke's Health Network and Lea Valley Health Network for going out of their way to making sure that our first-line police officers are out there getting our COVID-19 vaccinations if needed. They were really Johnny on the spot, and some of our local politicians pushed to get us in, to get up there and get vaccinated. So a lot of our members on our department have taken advantage of that, and are getting ourselves out there to, to make sure that we're a better service to our community by hopefully not spreading it and also not getting COVID-19. And with that, on that same note, I know Dorni Park and Lea Valley Health Network are working together for a vaccination clinic next Wednesday. So I just want to remind all of our residents that there will be increased traffic, there will be increased police presence there. But also, it is not just show up and get a shot. It is by appointment only. So I want to emphasize that people do not just come there and try to get a shot without having an appointment. That will be a huge strain on them, as well as our residents that live in the area with traffic, if you think you're just going to show up and go through a line and get a shot without an appointment. So I stress, please do not show up without an appointment. Some more exciting news that we have, I just wanted to announce that we have hired a new police officer. Amanda Cramp has been brought on board. She started on the 28th of December, and she is currently in the Allentown Police Academy, receiving her ACT 120 training. And she will graduate, I believe, the second week in June. So we're looking forward to getting Amanda on board, out on the street and serving our community. We are very, very, very close to getting another new hire on board. I will not release her name yet, but she's in the process, and also a township resident. So we're looking forward to getting her on board, hopefully within the next few weeks. So our hiring process is working very well. And lastly, I just want to thank all the men and women of the South White Hall Township Police Department for all their hard work in 2020. It was, to say the least, a very challenging year with pandemic, civil unrest, everything else that's been going on. And they have served our community with dignity and pride, and have done a fantastic job. They're out there working hard every single day of the year. And I appreciate what they do, and hopefully our community does too, which I know they do, because I get the emails and the phone calls saying they do. So I want to thank our community for that as well.
Thanks, Chief. Yeah, job well done, under amazing leadership by you and, and your, the rest of your leadership team. So great job. We're very blessed. All right. Any questions for the chief? All right, we don't have this on our list, but I'd like to make sure we get it added. A report out from our Fire Commissioner, Chris Kitcher-Avich. Chris, do you have anything you want to add tonight in regards to volunteer fire?
Sorry about that. No, I don't have anything prepared. We are working into the new year. As the chief had talked about the COVID shots, I know a lot of our first responders have gotten their first vaccines, and some of them are maybe even on their second. So we are keeping things going on, on the fire company side, and making sure they're all trained. And, and we got some training plans coming up for the new year. Hopefully, some of the COVID will ease, and the guys get together, and men and women can do some more hands-on training and some, some good stuff that way. But other than that, we are ready, ready for service.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for, for working with the team, you know, trying to help them through this difficult time. Much appreciated. Your leadership is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Fire Commissioner Kitcher-Avich? All right. Next, we have our Township Engineer, Tony. What you got?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna dovetail a little bit with what Dave Manhart said, is that, you know, our report actually has gone to a larger sheet. You can see we have a lot of, a lot of projects on our list that's come in this year, and kind of working through the system. So we're keeping busy. Additionally, we are working for our year-end report. Usually work with staff and Public Works to go through all the projects that are either in construction, in maintenance, or hopefully getting closed out to get those off the books for the staff. So working with everyone, and the commissioner should see the year-end report shortly.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions for Tony?
I just have a quick question, Tony. I noticed at the bottom of that report, there's some fairly old years there. How long do they stay on that list? If, is there a period of inactivity, or is this just phases?
That's, that's, those are the ones that we're trying our best to get cleaned up. I mean, some of the things that we have to do at the end of the day, or get out of the bills, or get, get one or two more documents to wrap those up. So we usually try hard to get those off the books. Some of them, you know, construction So we usually try hard to get those off the books. Some of them, you know, construction took long, you had a maintenance period of almost two years at the end of that. So those are some of the reasons that those projects are there. But our goal is to not only get them through construction, get them through maintenance, make sure the township's happy with the work, all the public improvements and get them off the books.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Tony.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, any other questions for Tony? All right.
Thank you very much.
You got it, Tony. At this point in the agenda, it's the opportunity for courtesy of the floor. This is the chance for any, anybody in the audience who'd like to approach the board on a non-agenda item. No actions will be taken on these, but we are open for discussion. Is there anybody this evening that would like courtesy of the floor? Randy or Renee, did you get any requests? No. I think Joanne, I just got a yes from Joanne. Joanne, did you want to? You're, the floor is yours.
So the last time the comp plan was done was 2009. And the only thing I can find on it is called the 2009 Comp Plan Goal Statement. And I just do have one question. Under Section 7, which is titled Transportation Efficiency and Effectiveness. And then it is item number 7.13, a citizens advisory group that focuses on traffic problems. Was supposed to be, I guess, formed. Was that ever done? Because I know you guys were talking about advisory boards, but I think I might have missed that part.
Joanne, I'm, I don't have an answer for you off the top of my head. I'd have to look at that report and I'm not even sure exactly what report you're looking at. If that was, was, was a discussion report, a final report. So we might have to get back to you on that, on the status of what was done or not done or where that stands as far as what you're looking at. Can, can we do that?
Sure, I, I'll even email to you what I have as the 2009 complaint.
If you, Joanne, if you'd like to send that to, to Dave, we can try and get some, Dave Manhart, we could try and get you some, some answers and Renee, and we can try and get you some answers to your question.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine, thank you.
Got it. Is there anybody else this evening for courtesy of the floor? All right. Wow, um, that being said, our invoices and purchasing requisitions have been reviewed by our township manager and the director of finance. We do need a motion this evening to authorize to pay our checks, our checks and to issue our checks and pay our bills is tabulated. Hello, I'm tongue-tied. Do I hear said motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Seton. Do I hear a second? I'll make a second, second from Commissioner Morgan. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Renee?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilia?
Aye.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
No, I'm going to vote no. I was not able to review the invoices yet that I typically do, so I'm a no on this one.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Renee. All right, that being said, we have no executive session planned for this evening. I do need a motion for adjournment.
Enjoyment?
A motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Good thing we're adjourning because I can't speak any longer. So a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a wonderful evening, everybody. Stay safe.
This conference will now be recorded.